Please silence your cell phones. Okay, Mr. Clerk, is our system up and running?
It should be ready to go.
Okay, great. All right. Okay, it's 3:30 on November 21st, 2024. This regular session of the Caddo Parish Commission is now in order. Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Crackman.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Young.
Present.
Commissioner John Paul Young.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas is absent, by the way. Commissioner Burrell.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Gage Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Blake.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Cothran.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus is absent, and Commissioner Efferson.
Present.
All right, that gives you 10 of 12 commissioners present, and that does constitute a quorum.
Okay, I'd like to invite Pastor Collier of Galilee Baptist Church to come up to the podium and give us our invocation today, if you're willing, Pastor. Is he here? Oh. I realize you're sitting in a, not in an aisle seat. And then I'd like to ask Commissioner Cothran to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Shall we pray? God, how thankful we are to, first of all, have the privilege of calling on your most holy and righteous name. Thank you for the time that you've given us to come together. Now, God, as we prepare to go into this time of meeting, we ask God for your direction. We ask God that you would be present with us. Thank you for these commissioners who serve, and thank you, God, for those who have come today. And we ask God that everything that's done today will be pleasing in your sight. It's in your Son Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We would ask everyone to remove their hat. Military has the option of saluting. Everyone else, we ask to put your hand over your heart. Let's remember the POWs and the MIA's.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Collier, and thank you, Commissioner Cothran. We have an agenda addition today. It was inadvertently left off of our agenda last meeting, and it is the special resolution recognizing November as Prostate Cancer Awareness and Men's Health Month for 2024. That is also the reason why we're all wearing either facial hair or mustaches or artificial mustaches today to raise awareness of this important health fact. Is there any motion up? Commissioner Cothran moves to add to the agenda, and seconded by Commissioner Gage Watts. Okay, so before we vote, I'll open a public hearing about whether or not this item should be added to the agenda. If you wish to speak for or against the addition of this item to the agenda, please come forward now. The public hearing is open. This looks uncontroversial. No one appears to speak. Public hearing is closed. Now we can vote.
I'm sorry, it looks like the computer is saying it failed.
This works fine.
But it does.
The vote must be unanimous. We have two people absent.
It does advance.
So this is fine. That will be added to the agenda. What would the item number be?
Eight point two.
Eight point two. Okay, now the chair moves to suspend the rules for, which, which item is it, Commissioner Burrell? To bring up 19.1 for consideration now. Okay, we've got a motion by myself, seconded by Commissioner Gage Watts, with support from other people. Does that pass by acclamation? Is that okay? Any objections? Okay. All right, the rules are thereby suspended, and we will now talk about 19.1. If you put a public comment in to talk about this item, which is the community lighthouse allocation, this will be a time when you can come up and speak at the podium. Please wait for me to call on you, but if you're planning to speak, you can start making your way forward to speak about this topic. Commissioner Burrell?
Mr. Chairman, do I need to at this time to do the substitute motion or do it afterwards? You know, if you look on your page there.
Okay, let me read it.
The second, not that one, the other one. Mr. Chairman, the other one.
Okay, yeah, so just do it in a second. Commissioner Gage Watts will advise you about the perfect time. All right, so do we have, do we have any motions relating to this item?
Sorry?
Do we have a motion relating to this item?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, so you have a motion to.
Have a substitute motion.
Approve.
We have a motion to approve, yes.
With an amendment.
With an amendment.
Okay, and the amendment is on this sheet?
No, the amendment is on the one in front of you, Mr. Chairman. That one.
I see, okay. So, Mr. Clerk, do you have the amendment also?
I do. Would you like me to read it?
Please read it for the record.
So, I don't have it.
I'll read it for the record.
Expressed as an amendment, but it is a potential substitute motion.
Okay, yes.
That's what we have it written as. And it is that Commissioner Burrell moves that, moves to repurpose the Galilee American Rescue Plan project funds from the construction, I mean, I'm sorry, to repurpose the Galilee ARPA project funds for the construction of the following two community lighthouses. The first, $250,000 for a community lighthouse to serve the Allendale neighborhood to be constructed at Galilee Baptist Church, and the second, $250,000 allocation for a community lighthouse to serve the MLK neighborhood to be constructed at Willow Shoot Baptist Church.
Okay, that's got a motion from Commissioner Burrell, seconded by, I'll, I'll second as the chair. And we've got Commissioner Burrell, you're on the board. Do you wish to speak again, or should I move on to? Attorney Frazier, you, you have a point to share?
Commissioner, I just wanted to clarify. Commissioner Burrell's motion is the original motion, correct, and not a substitute? This is the first motion that we've had.
This is the first motion.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that that's.
This is the first motion.
Thank you.
But it is a little bit different from the text on the agenda. Yes. Okay. Did you want to speak again?
Well, I will say something, Mr. Chairman. I think that we discussed this project ad nauseam, and we've gone back and forth on it. This is the final adjustment to this, to the motion, and I ask for your favorable passage on this.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Gregory Young, you're on the board.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Please put your microphone a little down.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to amend the amended, the amendment.
We just haven't, yeah, so we just have an original motion.
I understand.
So you want to amend, you want to amend the motion?
I want to amend that motion.
Yes.
And I would like to add to the amendment that all additional, all extra funds be returned back to the commission.
Okay.
How is that different?
Is there a second for this amendment? Okay. All right, would you like to speak about your motion?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. President. As I understand it, that the work is going to be done, and then we're simply going to provide for the reimbursement. Is that clear from the administration?
Yes, sir.
Right. So I want to be clear that I would like for Interfaith through the lighthouse project that they're doing to ensure that we're not paying the majority of the money. We want to match what they do. Let's say if the project is $425,000 instead of the half a million dollars, the total project, let's say for Willow Shoot, or in this case for Galilee, where if it's $425,000, then we just want to pay $212,500. You follow me? I just want to make sure we're paying the equal amount, and anything less than the amount that we're dedicating should be returned back to the commission. Is that clear to everybody?
That's clear to me.
Okay.
Does everyone else, anyone else have an opinion about that? Okay, so now we have a motion to amend that stipulates that any residual funds from construction will only be met, you know, 50% by the parish and the residual returned to the parish. So if there's no further discussion, we can vote on that amendment. Oh, is someone, who's on the board? Let me, let me, let me let him talk during the main motion in a second. Okay, so we'll do the amendment. Please vote yes or no on the amendment.
What, Mr.?
Sure.
If we're voting on the amendment, I'm.
Amended motion, voting on the amended motion, correct?
Are we voting on the amended motion?
I think this is, as I understand it, as the way it was phrased, this is just a motion
to amend the original motion, not amend and adopt the original motion. So this is a motion that would amend the motion that Commissioner Burrell made.
Without passing it.
Without adopting it.
Right.
It would just amend the motion, and then you will consider whether or not to adopt that amended motion.
Commissioner Young. Mr. President, the way I understand Robert's Rules of Order in this, in this respect, is that you have an original, the main motion, an amendment, and then you can amend the amendment, and the way you vote on it is retroactive. What's on, what's on the board right now is the amendment to the amendment. That, that's the only thing that's, that's on the board right now.
Yes.
Point of order, Mr. President, it hasn't been an amendment only.
There's an amendment to an original motion.
You're the only one that's amending, because the original motion is, was stated as what he said.
So his, so his replacement.
Will be yours.
His, his replacement is, is, has become the original.
Amendment, yes, correct.
Yes, that's the original, the original motion is what Commissioner Burrell said, and it's written on this piece of paper, and we read it out loud.
Okay.
And you're offering the only amendment on the table to that, and we're voting on it now.
Correct.
Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Young.
In an abundance of caution.
And we're not voting to pass the original motion now.
Okay.
That will be next.
A subsequent. No, that's okay, that's okay.
Okay, so everybody, please vote on just the amendment, and then we can have our discussion about the, how we feel about the original motion.
Okay, that amendment passes with 10 in support, none in opposition, and 2 absent, and then the motion would be appropriate.
All right, so now we're talking about the original motion. I'd like to ask, is it all right with everyone if we have our visitor speak? Mr. Wills? Go ahead, Nathaniel.
Good afternoon, my name is Nathaniel Wills. I'm the organizer with North Louisiana Interfaith, an organization here in the northwest region of Louisiana. I want to have our, our membership that's here, please stand and be recognized, representing about, I think today, like 12 different member organizations of ours, so y'all may be seated. Thank you. We are coming, I'm speaking for you today to address the amendment that y'all will just vote on to fund these two community lighthouses, and I want to share with you what our, our part as North Louisiana Interfaith will be. And first, it is to address Mr. Young's substitute motion, and it is to add the additional funding needed to make both of these projects fully constructed community lighthouses. So that is our commitment to you. You have a letter before you signed by myself, our board president, Susan Caldwell, Pastor Collier of Galilee Baptist Church, and Pastor Alvin Mays of Willow Shoot Baptist Church, the two proposed locations. So with that, we, we hope for favorable passage and work with you in the repurposing of these funds, and want to say that we have worked really well with Erica Bryant, your parish administrator in the past, Clay Walker, your parish administrator. When things get really bad, we are able to get in quick communication with a lot of you individually as commissioners and your administration, and this is a way that we want to further that work with you in, in whatever comes up, whether it's natural disaster, economic disaster, health disaster, or just a crisis in any neighborhood. The volunteers and the human side of this are what are going to be the strongest part, and that is what we are offering to bring to the table for you all today, in addition to the financial matching commitment that we are making. So, Mr. Young, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wills. Okay, before we go, because I want to ask one question of our administration, I want to make sure that water backups are included in the agreements for both of these sites. Is that your understanding as well from our discussion so far?
Part of the motion.
Yes, that's what's the, the previous, so yes, water backups is still part of.
Yes, I just want to make sure it applies to both of these new ones.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was for the record. Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the Interfaith mission is honorable and good. However, I've never felt that, that an allocation of resources of this size to build two, or to, to provide power and water to two facilities of the most efficient use of those resources. So for that reason, I'll be opposed to this motion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Cothran.
Yes, I have several questions for Mr. Nathaniel Wills. Mr. Wills?
Mr. Wills, could you come back up to the podium so that you can respond to Commissioner Cothran's questions? Thank you.
Okay, I, like I said, I have several questions. First of all, total cost for either one of these facilities, do you know that?
We have really good estimates that have proved to be true on the 16 we've built so far, but we do not issue final engineering because it costs between $10,000 and $16,000 to do the final engineering until the funds are secured. So these projects, we can guarantee are between $350,000 and $550,000.
So 350, 500, okay. My next question, so the additional funds, you already have those, or you get it through a grant? What is the additional funds?
We have some funding left from the match that we obtained from, for the last projects that y'all funded part of, the Morning Star project and the Highland Center project from the Sandia National Laboratories, and we, we pool these funds with our statewide partners, six partners across the state, and so some of those funds could be available to us, and some of it, we will seek extra funding if needed. We can also use, we have line of credit that we can use on the rebates that could come back from this, so bridge loan financing is a possibility to us as well.
Okay, have the two original projects been completed, and if not, the approximate date?
Good question. Morning Star is complete. They finalized the well yesterday, and they hit water at 276 feet. It is very innovative. Nobody's dug a well in this area, and we did not know if we'd hit water, but God willing, we hit water at 276 feet with 75 gallons per minute. It was a beautiful thing. So the well is now complete. There is a little bit of plumbing to do left for the backup water source, but the, the lighthouse itself is fully functioning and producing power as we speak. Highland, the construction team met over there the other day, actually ran into Commissioner Young while we were meeting, and they are doing the final plans there, and once the project starts, construction doesn't take usually more than about six weeks.
The next question, if, if approved today, where would this, how, how will you fund this additional 20 lighthouses? Because the thing is, my understanding, you want to do a total of 24, am I correct?
We'd like to do 20 in Caddo Parish. We do, we are starting to learn that a couple more smaller ones important, so it might be, we may spread those funds out in a different way and do more, but some of them smaller at the neighborhood level. It's part of what we learned working in the June outage with you all two years ago. There is a program at the state called the Heroes Program that we helped them develop. It, it has $250 million to do projects just like this. 1.9 million of that has already been committed to a deployable battery hub that we're working with Landry's office to develop in this area, which would be different than a community lighthouse. People would not come there. It would be a hub where we keep batteries. Chief Reese is here today. Where are you, Chief Reese? We've had meetings with Chief Reese about how we could take batteries to people's homes, small battery packs that could run their CPAPs or oxygen, to take some of the burden off of our fire and police that are calling 911. I think you said there's something like 1,500 people you get a regular call from who are about to be in crisis, but if we can reach out to them ahead of time, bring a battery, we can, we can stifle that. So there's 250 million at the state. There is another 150 million in a clean energy fund, all for Louisiana, called Solar for Y'all. That is for, that can be used for residential living facilities, so there could be some lighthouses in our neighborhoods that are smaller that could fund it through that mechanism.
Next question, maintenance of the lighthouses, you know, they get built today. How do you maintain them? Because I think with the solar systems, my understanding, the panels last approximately 20 years or so.
Yeah, at 20 years, the panels are guaranteed to still have 80% capacity, so it's not like 20 years, you're done, you're still producing power. Galilee and Willow Shoot will not own these systems. They will sign a 20-year service agreement with us, and that, that means we agree to do the maintenance for 20 years. So they pay an amount back to us, that's what I was talking with Commissioner Crackman about the other day. So they will realize some savings from this, right? And part of that savings will go right back into the maintenance, so that we can guarantee and protect y'all's investment in your neighborhoods, that those, that those, that these projects will still be functioning, these systems will still be functioning for the long haul. We'll handle any warranties that have to be done, we'll do deferred, we will, we will do preventative maintenance, so that we, so we are not deferring maintenance, and then one day, we're in a crisis and these things don't work.
How are your locations determined?
We built a map of the entire state using the Social Vulnerability Index, and that is a mechanism that I explained, that we explained in the ARPA committee meeting that was designed by the federal government to help local decision makers, just like you decide what areas are most vulnerable in a disaster. There are 14 indicators in those, in that Social Vulnerability Index. It's things like how many people don't have a car, how many people are, have a medically electric-dependent device, how many people don't have internet, how many people don't have health insurance. So the higher the ranking, we build there first. But as I've told Commissioner Blake, we want to build them in every neighborhood. Because you have a better rank in the social vulnerability, doesn't mean we don't want to build a, a lighthouse in your neighborhood, but we do have to prioritize our most vulnerable first. Now, if we come up with some funding to build one in Broadmoor, we're going to build one in Broadmoor, right? Because that's, funding's tied to there, right? But we do try to, to prioritize our most vulnerable areas first.
Have you received any feedback concerning the efficiency to date from the lighthouses that, where you have only one completed, correct?
We have one completed here, we have 16 in operation across the state, and they have functioned during a disaster. So during Hurricane Francine, nine of them were activated, the other 12, the other four were not activated because there was still power in the areas where they were. They served over 1,000 people in those three days, and day three, every lighthouse was going into the night with a full charge. So they functioned as they were supposed to, without a hitch this go-round, and God willing, they continue, they will continue to do so.
Never mind. Last question, I know it's a lot of, I apologize.
That's all right, we tried to meet with you to answer all these questions.
It's okay, it, it's not just for me.
Okay.
The thing is, again, constituents.
Got you.
Are asking questions.
This is good.
They are not necessarily seated here, okay?
Got you.
And they get an opportunity to hear it either live, or they could go back and listen to it as well.
Yeah, please, yeah, please go.
The last thing is that, as I remember, when I was on the commission the first time, the first 10 months, we approved two, and we had a snafu with the ARPA funds, and we had to go into oil and gas. And my question, I guess, to administration is, at this particular time, concerning the ARPA funds, are they authorized to be used for the lighthouse?
Commissioner, we'll still have to put this through the vetting process, that we put all the ARPA projects through. So we will continue that process if you all pass this today. If there's something that changes, we'll let you know.
And the only reason I ask that question, because oil and gas money, we shouldn't be touching, okay? And we didn't want to last time, but again, a snafu came about unbeknown to everybody, to the Interfaith and to us as commissioners as well. Thank you very much.
And I could, I could add that we have used a million in ARPA funds to build these in New Orleans, so we do have a precedent, and so we can get Ms. Frazier in touch with the New Orleans attorneys as well, if that's helpful. Anything else? Mr. Young?
Thank you, Commissioner Cothran, thank you, Mr. Wills. That appears to be everyone who wishes to speak. In that case, we can vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms., before we, before we finish our vote, Ms. Glover, you wanted to speak about this. Thank you.
Good evening. John Glover, 9100 Rocker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7118. Sitting here before you all this afternoon, commissioners, administration, I learned a little bit more, but my question still remains. Now, more than the last meetings we've had, the projects that you are asking for funding through the ARPA dollars, they do not meet federal guidelines. Now, if something has changed since our last meeting where that information was divulged, then I'd like to know what those criterias or guidelines that now makes these projects eligible for these ARPA dollars. And like we've said already, the two lighthouses that didn't meet those guidelines, they were paid out of the oil and gas reserves. So we're not trying to go down that route, excuse me, indeed, but we want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position where we may be facing something legally down the road. See, if you don't qualify, you don't qualify. But if you're going to use something other than those ARPA dollars, then we need to know what they're going to be. Are you going to use taxpayer dollars, as you did with the Morning Star project, as well as the Highland project? We need to know these things, and we are not saying that these things are not good. We're saying you need to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and right now, they are not, unless something has changed since the last time we were informed that they did not meet federal criteria. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Since this is not the public comment section, we can respond to that. I'd like to wager a response to you. So we've just heard a new piece of evidence, which our legal team can confirm through more research, which is that in other parts of the state, such projects have met the criteria for ARPA, which may still be changing, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not sure what the exact history of our two previous lighthouses was. Did one of them comply with ARPA and the other one didn't? Or did they both not meet ARPA guidelines?
Yeah, we pay for both of those through the oil and gas fund.
Okay.
We do have the information on the New Orleans, and we'll get our consultants to review that information.
Okay, great. And when we, when we pay for them out of oil and gas, we're also using the ARPA dollars to replace revenue. Is that correct?
Yes, we have revenue replacement for that, and on the oil and gas, the, the basis there was economic development.
Right.
We had to use the economic development basis for that, since it didn't meet a public purpose.
Okay, and to answer your final question, whether it's ARPA dollars that are being used, or oil and gas dollars that are being used, they're all dollars that belong to the taxpayers. Federal taxpayers give us ARPA dollars, the people of Caddo Parish own the oil and gas money that comes in, so all the money that we're talking about using here belongs to the taxpayers, either federally or locally. Commissioner Cothran.
So my final, no, I'm not going to say my final. My question at this time is that, are we voting on ARPA money? Are we voting on oil and gas money? Are we voting not knowing?
You're voting on ARPA money.
Okay.
We would have to come back to you if we had to change the source of the funds.
Are you on the board, Commissioner Burrell?
Well, my, my final, my final comment, Mr. Chairman, is that if we can use them in New Orleans, this is still Louisiana, we ought to be able to use it in Shreveport. It seems like we are excluding Shreveport for some reason. But, but if, if the funds are good in New Orleans, I can assure you they should be good in Shreveport, because we're in, we are part of Louisiana, we no longer, we're not part of Texas.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Blake, you're on the board. Nice mustache.
Thank you so much. I'm very much in support of your resolution to make sure people are aware of prostate cancer. This is very uncomfortable to try to be serious with this on our face, but for a good cause, for cancer awareness. So I feel like that there still is not a clarification of whether we for sure have the funds, we're still looking for the funds. So it's not clear, you're saying we would still, if the funds weren't able to be found through ARPA, we would have to come back. I also have concerns that. I am not an expert in disaster mitigation, but I still feel like that this is not meeting all of Caddo Parish needs at this time. And I work next to a fire station that when we do lose power, they simply hook up a gas generator, and it's not a large one, in fact, it's the same size that I purchased this year for my company, and I did the quick math of 500,000 and figured out the cost right now for that size generator, and we could outfit 166 locations where they would have access to power. And so for me, I do have concerns on the cost per location for creating a space that people could charge, have warmth or cooling. I think it is a great endeavor to try to do, help the community. I think it is a great endeavor to try to do, help the community. I think something that was a big win in this is that the interface community came together, and y'all have been pulling the community and have created a way that we can communicate to find needs. But I think that the cost for this, it doesn't make sense long-term. And I think that we're in a slippery slope of the long-term funding for repairs. Are we going to continue to fund? And I just think that we're, it's not fair for everyone in the community. I think this is, it's not, I think that this should have been dispersed differently and not clustered in the city. So it is a no for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Epperson?
All for the question on the motion.
All right. This question has been called. We'll now vote on the question, which will end the debate.
Okay. And that called for question does pass, and so we will move forward to...
Okay, so now we'll vote on the original motion, which is to allocate the original motion as amended.
Agreed.
That's right.
That's to approve the allocation of ARPA funds for the community lighthouses, with 250,000 going to a project at Galilee and 250,000 going to Willashoot, and the additional funds being returned to the parish.
All right. Let's vote.
And that motion carries, it looks like, with seven in support, three in opposition.
Thank, thank you for your enthusiasm. Let's not, let's not be enthusiastic much longer. I would appreciate it if some of you would stick around for our prostate health awareness resolution, which is coming up in about two minutes, because we're all wearing mustaches just for you.
Mr. President?
So now we'll move back into regular order by acclamation. We're now in regular order.
Okay, that brings us to citizens' comments.
Oh, is it really?
And I believe the only citizens' comment requests that I received were for the item that has already been taken up. So I believe we can probably move past that. I was saying, that brings us to citizens' comments on the regular agenda, but...
Yes, I think we have no citizens' comments.
Those have already been addressed in our, in our session that we had.
Now we have, now we have a 6.1 visitor from Stacy Brown.
On the vote, we'll, we can take a two-minute recess, allow those who want to go ahead and leave to leave, so we can keep ordering in the chamber, because we're moving on with business.
Well, we're having, we're having a visitor come and speak. I don't think it...
I understand, but it's, it's a lot of chatter going on.
Okay, so anybody, anybody who wants to leave, please go ahead and leave. Otherwise, if you stick around, you can hear from the chairwoman of our tourist bureau, and then also see why we're wearing mustaches.
I want her to hail everybody's attention.
Sure. Oh, she can just wait, she can just wait a couple of minutes. Okay, yeah. Okay, so we'll recess for 120 seconds. Hope the timer's going. I think, I don't know, let's do the photo to set this off. I think we should all go there. Yeah, let's do the photo now.
Do you want to make an announcement?
Okay, so if you have a fake mustache or facial hair for Prostate Health Awareness Month, we're going to do a group photo now during this recess. So come to the front, please.
We're going to get a mustache?
Yeah.
Hold that off. I like your goatee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you having a conditioner?
Placed correctly?
Y'all got real ones.
That's pretty good.
It's like a soul path.
Everybody with...
What about you?
All right.
All right.
Just when the picture was good.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
We have kind of a regular...
I tried this.
All right. Our recess is now over. We're back in order. Welcome, Ms. Brown.
Good afternoon. President Young, Caddo Commissioners, and Administrator Bryant. I appreciate y'all allowing me to come before you today to give you a little update on tourism and what's been happening. We appreciate your appointment to our board, Casey Hartley. Unfortunately, she could not be with us today, but she has been an asset on the board. So I'm going to do a brief PowerPoint. I know you've got a lot on your agenda, but if you would like any clarifications, just let me know, or if you'd like me to sit down with you one-on-one, I'd be glad to do that as well. So if you would, turn to the next slide. And the next one. So this is our 10th time that we have received the Convention South Reader's Choice Award as a top convention destination, as well as several other awards, such as a Destination Award in October of 2024, a Louis Award, which is from the state of Louisiana for 318 Restaurant Week, and an Addy for Website Rebrand. One of our staff members was named Member of the Year for the Sponsorship Mastery Association, and Destinations International, one of our staff members achieved their Certified Destination Management Executive. From year-to-date through October, our sales efforts amassed 184 unique conventions, meetings, and sporting events booked, with over 101,000 room nights, which is up 11% from 2023. Meetings and conventions have been a little bit slower to come back after COVID, and we're seeing that strengthen for the future. We have just completed our comprehensive sports strategic plan with the Huddle Up Group, and it highlights the Sports Commission as a nationally well-positioned destination as well as commission. We were, in fact, 80% higher, or 84% higher than the national average in the way that we service and work with sporting events. We also were successful in onboarding our Vice President of Destination Development. Last year, we completed our Destination Master Plan, and one of the things our board committed to is, this will not be a plan that sits on a shelf. We will have someone that every day, they work on moving that plan forward, and that person is Karen Barnes. So she came on in April, and she is going strong. We also saw in that Destination Master Plan and the need for updating the film office and moving that forward. And since then, after that plan came forward, then, as you know, 50 Cent and other things have happened. So we have restarted the Film Commission and appreciate your consideration for assistance in that endeavor. We also serve on several boards that are not only local and regional, but national as well. If you'll turn to the next slide. So this gives you a little bit of a highlight of some of the major events that we have booked in our community. On the top is meetings and conventions, and the bottom is sporting events. These are all things that had at least a million-dollar economic impact on our community. So this is some of the 184 I mentioned earlier. Of those meetings and conventions, we hosted 32 other Louisiana State Associations this last year, and that included the Louisiana Travel Association and the Louisiana Municipal Association, and with a total impact of 5.8 of those state associations. So that's a great market for us. We've also seen our sporting area continue, and you'll notice we're finishing out the year with the LSU and Grambling State University Women's Basketball Competition that will be in the Brookshire Grocery Arena. So we're looking forward to hosting that. If you'll go on to the next slide. So you'll see several things that were on the last slide for 2024 are also coming up again in '25, and some in '26 as well. One of the things we recognize is that when we bring repeat business, we bring more value to the community. So in other words, we learn the first year, what are their needs, accumulate the assets needed, and then we are able to do that at a smaller cost of staff expenses, as well as other expenses to the community. And it provides that greater economic impact. It also gives us some great things on the books for the future. So one of these, you can kind of see it in the middle there, ASA Archery. This is actually a 10-year contract, so it goes out to 2031. Many of these are booked into the future as well. If you'll move on to the next slide. So this is kind of looking at the marketing conventions timeline, some of the major events that we publicized, as well as produced, like 318 Restaurant Week, major advertising and promotion campaigns, campaigns such as Mardi Gras, but also looking at ways that we've worked to bring in, like the UK fam tour, those were media from the university, from UK, that we worked with the Louisiana Office of Tourism on. Also, major events that we helped to publicize, such as the Diamond Youth Baseball, as well as bringing in influencers and others into our community. If you'll move to the next slide. Zartico is a research and data company that helps us really track what we're doing and the results of those. So a lot of it's geolocation. So when you travel around with your cell phone, you carry a little tracker with you, basically. So they don't know exactly who you are, but they know where you're going, where you came from. That can also be connected to Visa data, so we can track some of that spending. So it's great information to help us not only know what people are, who's coming, what they're doing, what are they spending money on, where are they going within our community, but also how do we target them better? So some of our potential targeting messages that rate high are attractions, food, outdoor recreation, accommodations. So some of the key spending areas are food, retail, accommodations, and attractions. Some of the key markets that are staying in our community are from Houston, New Orleans, Lafayette, and Dallas. So you can see from Zartico that our visitors increased by 3.9%. Our visitors' spend increased by 4.1%. So those visitors are creating greater value. From out-of-state, we did see our in-state visitation, I'm sorry, out-of-state visitation go down a little bit. With our rebranding, we concentrated very heavily on a closer-end region, including in-state, and we were able to move the needle. And now that we've established that brand, we'll be moving out again more into the surrounding areas even further. Next slide. Looking at campaign performance, again, that's utilizing Zartico and other databases. We know that our Mardi Gras campaign, for every 30, every $1 we spent, we brought back into the community $32.20. On our general leisure campaign, for every dollar we spent, we brought $30 back into the market. Now, these are tracked directly from our ads. So that's not including people who might have just been traveling through, or just came based on family, other things. These are people who actually saw our ads and clicked through and moved forward into coming to our destination. The website, as you can see, we have made great strides. We converted to a brand-new website, and you can see that is paying some big dividends for us. They're really returning again, again. It's where you can see that engagement time in our community. Next slide. These are our top 10 visitation markets this year, and you can see them compared to last year. So we increased some markets like Dallas, but we saw a little bit of a decrease in some markets like Monroe. However, one nice surprise was Memphis. We saw an almost double-digit increase in the percentage there, almost doubled. What we learn also through Zartico is we're able to see that spend. So for instance, a visitor from New Orleans spends considerably more than a visitor from Dallas. So both markets are important, because we get more people from Dallas than we get from New Orleans, but we know that that's a higher-dollar visitor, so we want to make sure that we're properly targeting that market to come into our area as well. If you'll move on to the next slide. So as I mentioned earlier, with our Destination Development Plan, we have, with your input, been able to start moving that forward. If you'll head on to the next slide. These are some of our accomplishments. Apologize, I must not have properly loaded that font, so some of it looks a little strange. But with Karen, she's been able to really bring about a lot of coalitions, getting more and more people together. Y'all have been very active in the kind of blight and litter area, and we've been able to help magnify that by bringing others on board as well, and make some great progress. Also, you'll see some other areas that we've been able to move forward, the reboot of the Entertainment and Film Commission, the creation of the Tourism Pitch Competition is actually one we'll be announcing in the first quarter of next year. So with the Destination Master Plan, we identified one of the peak need areas is our outdoors. We have one of the best outdoor areas in the community, any, in this region. You can, you know, you can hike, you can bike, you can horseback ride, you can go canoeing and kayaking, water skiing, all this great activity, but if you don't own your own, you can't really do it here. So I would love to see some public-private partnerships. You have Eddie D. Jones Park, where y'all have worked really hard on some great biking trails and horseback riding trails. Wouldn't you love to see an outfitter located out there that had bikes, or maybe horses, for rent? So let's do a Tourism Pitch Competition. We're working with the Entrepreneurial Accelerator Program on that, where we'll be inviting companies to come, either brand-new companies or ones that want to extend their product line, to pitch us on opportunities to really help that outdoor shine. So we're trying to do some really creative things and utilize the great assets within our community, like the Entrepreneurial Accelerator Program. If you'll move on to the next slide. So this is one of the, the areas, as you'll see, again, apologize about that type font there, some of our priorities for next year. Many of those y'all are very involved in. One that actually happened today was in the middle there, AMI Kids, Caddo and Workforce Career Day. If you're not familiar with AMI Kids, that is a special school in Caddo Parish that is really geared towards, I believe, the sixth through eighth grade, kids who are kind of at risk, and they need a little bit of extra guidance, and we need to make sure they have hope for the future, and that there will be jobs here in our community, and a reason for them to success, to succeed and excel at school is because there will be those opportunities. So we connected them today with a lot of different communities, businesses throughout our communities, and talked to them about opportunities for the future. Whether they want to go to college or not, there are opportunities right here at home for them. So we know that when they head into high school, they've got to make a lot of choices on what that career path looks like. So now's the time to catch them when they're in those younger grades and start them headed in the right direction. It was very successful, and we had a great day, and looking for more next year. Next slide. So on the Film and Entertainment Commission, we have brought on board Wade Marshall. Some of y'all may know Wade from his days at Millennium Studios. He has been a mainstay in the film and entertainment community for many, many years, and has helped us, just kind of on the side, work with film projects. As things had slowed down, now that they're really picking up again, we really need somebody focused on that full-time. So Wade is coming on board. We're going to be redoing our whole new website, making sure that we're onboarding all of those businesses in our community that work with the film industry, that we've got that, all that contact information, making sure we're developing that film workforce. Again, that's a great area that you don't necessarily have to have a degree to work in the film industry, and work with others that are working in that area, such as the Robinson Film Center, in that workforce development. So it's not duplicating... focused on that full-time. So Wade is coming onboard. We're going to be redoing our whole new website, making sure that we're onboarding all of those businesses in our community that work with the film industry, that we've got that, all that contact information, making sure we're developing that film workforce. Again, that's a great area that you don't necessarily have to have a degree to work in the film industry and work with others that are working in that area, such as the Robinson Film Center, in that workforce development. So it's not duplicating efforts, it's magnifying those efforts and bringing different organizations together. Next slide. So also, as we've talked, this Destination Master Plan, not only does it look at our community through the eyes of a visitor and build a better place to visit, it builds a better place for all of us to live, work, and play. So that's why we're working together to look at everything from infrastructure to workforce development to litter and crime, and how do we help in those areas? Next. So this is how we accomplish that. Our overall, we're projecting that our budget revenue will be down a little bit this year compared to budget. However, we do expect it to be up a little bit next year. We were successful in keeping our expenses low this year, as we saw that budget wasn't coming in quite right, so we will actually end up projected with a little bit of a surplus at the end of the year. And moving into 2025, we expect to have a good, strong year. We've got several new assets coming onboard, including Live Casino and Chasing Aces, as well as a number of other assets. So we're looking forward to a great year. Next slide, please. Again, I apologize. This one looks better. We've got the correct fonts there. So as you can see, we do have several divisions of the Bureau, everywhere from the Holiday Trail of Lights, which is a cooperative partnership throughout North Louisiana, where several cities pool their funds to market us as a holiday destination, because November, December, and January are peak need periods in our industry. We also have the Boomer Bus Byway. It's a national scenic byway, and y'all have been tremendous assets in working with that. We're just about to erect the beautiful gateway signs in those small northern parishes along Highway 3049, Highway One and Highway Two, going throughout Caddo, Bossier, Webster, and Claiborne Parishes. Then also, obviously, standing back up, the Film and Entertainment Office. We've always had that, it just didn't have a paid person for the last few years focusing solely on film, so we've got that person back. And our Sports Commission, this is the Events Fund. In the Sports Commission, the staffing of that is one of the departments within the Bureau, but then the events are with the Sports Commission. As a part of that, you do appoint Commissioner Stormy Gage Watts, as well as Chantel Hardison, and then Patrick Wesley is also as the joint appointment from all of the different governing bodies, and your assistance with those events is greatly appreciated. Again, President Young, Caddo Commissioners, and Administrator Bryant, I appreciate you allowing me to come before you today, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brown. Are there any commissioners who'd like to ask Ms. Brown a question? Seems like you gave us a very thorough.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
There are no questions for you.
Have a wonderful day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, State.
All right, that brings us to Section Seven, the Regular Session and Special Session Minutes. Motion from Commissioner Efferson, second from Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? We can vote.
Just to be clear, is this motion to adopt both regular and special session?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure, thank you.
Yes. Oh, Commissioner Jones, you want to speak?
Yes, I wanted to englobo eight-point-one as well.
Okay, and eight-point-two, which is the agenda.
Yes, the amendment.
Okay.
Okay. So the motion is to adopt Section Seven and Eight.
Yes.
And Commissioner Greg Young and Stormy Gage Watts, thank you. That motion carries with ten and support, none in opposition, and two absent.
Right. Are we reading the Stoner Hill Baptist Church Resolution?
It is already been presented.
Okay. So will you read the prostate health awareness resolution, please?
I will.
I don't think we need to stand for this one at all, because we have our symbolic approval of the.
And it reads, "This is a special resolution recognizing November as Prostate Cancer and Men's Health Awareness Month." It reads, "Whereas the Caddo Parish Commission acknowledges the importance of addressing critical health issues that impact the lives of its residents and promoting awareness to improve overall community well-being, and whereas prostate cancer is one of the most common cancers among men, affecting approximately one in eight men during their lifetimes, and early detection through regular screenings significantly increases survival rates. And whereas Movember, a global movement taking place each November, encourages individuals to grow mustaches as a visible symbol to spark conversations and raise awareness of men's health issues, including prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and suicide prevention. And whereas Movember has successfully raised millions of dollars for research, education, and support programs empowering men to take action for their health and well-being. And whereas the Caddo Parish Commission seeks to recognize the vital role that awareness campaigns like Movember play in encouraging preventative health measures, early detection, and support for those affected by prostate cancer and other men's health challenges. Now therefore be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission and due legal and regular session convene that it does hereby proclaim November 2024 as Prostate Cancer and Men's Health Awareness Month in Caddo Parish, and further recognizes the contributions of the Movember Movement in promoting men's health and encouraging the residents of Caddo Parish to participate in and support this critical cause."
Thank you so much, and thank you, everyone, for your support and for indulging me by wearing your very humorous false facial hair.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Coffin, you're on the board.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to just speak very briefly about prostate cancer awareness and Men's Health Month. This is a very serious disease, and the thing is, on a personal level, I know what it means because, again, there was a doctor by the name of Dr. Stanley J. Smith here in Shreveport, who was my physician at one time, and he has transitioned since that time from prostate cancer. But the thing is, what I wanted to share is that six years ago, I dealt with this, six years ago, and the reason I'm sitting here now is because of early detection. A lot of people don't like talking about it, particularly men, okay? And I saw some men in their latter stages because they chose not to deal with it very early on. So once again, I share with any man out there, please, 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 please get the examinations as early as possible so you can continue to live and take care of your families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Coffin. I'll share a couple of facts that I have learned about prostate cancer and prostate health as well. It affects one in eight men in America, although among African-American men, it is one in six. And among men over sixty-five, it is, well, high. So I think eighty percent of cases are discovered in men over sixty-five. So if you look at the people in this room, the people at this horseshoe, it's something we should all take seriously. At least one of us is going to get hit by the prostate health arrow, and the best way to prevent, you know, a tragic outcome is to get checked early. It's normally a blood test, and then you can have other types of tests, like a biopsy if you need one. And you can also eat healthy. If you eat foods in the broccoli family, those are really good for you. And there is a supplement that is really, really good for everybody, but especially for your prostate health, and that is turmeric, also called curcumin, which is an extract from turmeric, and it works best if it's combined with black pepper extract, makes it more absorbable in your body. I take it every day, it's good for aches and pains, but also, if you take it over the long term, the way they do in India by putting it in their food all the time, like they have very low rates of prostate problems in India because they're always eating turmeric, people think. There are some big studies about it, some small studies about it, they're all promising. So I hope everyone will stop by my favorite local drugstore Drug Emporium, get some turmeric, and start taking it before you ever experience a problem, because prostate cancer is just one of the problems you can have with your prostate. You can also have benign prostatic hyperplasia, which is an enlarged prostate, which makes life less pleasant. So it's something everyone should be aware of. Wives, tell your husbands, tell your fathers, tell your brothers. If you're a man listening now, take it to heart, and that's all I have to say. Thank you so much. All right, we can move on to Section Nine, Communicates and Committee Reports. Before we do our discussion item, are there any communicators separate from that discussion item to be shared right now? All right, Commissioner Efferson, would you like to lead us in a discussion of resilient way?
Well, no, I was going to communicate.
Oh, okay. You're on for a communicator case, go ahead.
Okay. Just want to thank Chief. Want to thank Chief Reese with the Shreveport Fire Department, Precinct 122, which is the Police and Fire Academy on Greenwood Road, had consistently been opening late during voting times, so they got with the individual that's supposed to open up, make sure that it opened up on time, and it will be opening up on time in the future. Also, for those of you that may get the mail-in ballots, they're behind, they just mailed yesterday, they got behind because of some technicalities out of Baton Rouge, you know, that come from the Secretary of State's office, so they should be arriving today, your mail-in ballots, for those of you that vote by mail. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Efferson. Okay, so we also have under communicators this discussion item, but first, Administrator Bryant, are there any questions you're responding to?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Efferson had some questions about Resilient Way, would you like to ask those now?
Just like to thank the administration for providing me the information that I requested, and I'll be digesting it later on.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. You did make reference to Resilient Way, and I'm not sure how widely distributed a note I saw was, but I'd heard Commissioner Efferson, I know, is always trying to help his constituents, and I appreciate that. I think he's been working to get better access to that, the area behind Resilient Way for, well, since I first came on the commission, I think that was an early battle of Commissioner Efferson's. But I did get some feedback from SWEPCO in that the Resilient Way is a public road, and Resilient Way is accessible by whoever wants to access it, and it's used primarily to access the business park there. What's the name of the business park commissioner?
Resilient Technology.
Okay, I should have, that's easy enough, Resilient Technology Park. And other users of the Resilient Technology Park may also appreciate the fact that it's one-way entrance and one-way exit. So just wanted to mention those topics for consideration. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Burrell.
Well, I think John answered my question, because the other day I asked the question, if you have city funds and parish funds, would it be considered a private road or not? If so, should it be marked as a private road? So what I'm hearing you say, John, Commissioner Atkins, that it is a public road.
Yeah.
So that, in my opinion, says that Ken can access that road. Is that correct?
Well, that's beyond my.
So they didn't tell you that? SWEPCO didn't tell you that? They was telling you the other thing.
I would assume if it's a public road, everyone can access it.
Well, that's what I asked. I posed a question.
Everybody can access it, yes. Is that the question, Commissioner? Can people access it?
Well, access it, yeah. Access it from another road. My understanding, you just say that you're trying to.
You can go in it from Greenwood.
Okay.
At a certain point. If I may, a point of information.
Sure.
All commissioners were given the same information, please peruse the information that I requested.
Was it sent to us, Commissioner, on email?
According to my email.
Yes.
I believe it was emailed to us.
Today?
Yeah. Everything that we're talking about, but it's kind of voluminous, so get it and digest it, and that's why I say we'll address it in the future.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Efferson, and Commissioner Atkins and Burrell. That's all the communicators on the board, so we can move on. We'll skip President's Report today, I've already done a little talking. That brings us to public hearing on zoning ordinances and cases. Mr. Clerk, would you like to exercise your voice?
Thank you very much. The first item is a public hearing on Ordinance 6505 of 2024. That's an ordinance to amend Volume Two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code, relative to dwelling manufactured home and the use matrix, with all their provisions included herein and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is a public hearing for Ordinance 6506 of 2024. That's an ordinance to amend Volume Two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code, by amending the zoning of property located on the northwest corner of Blanchard Fur Road and Lucas Lane in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District to RAPUD Rural Agricultural Planned Unit Development Zoning District, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. That's in District One. The next item is a public hearing for Ordinance 6507 of 2024. That's an ordinance to amend Volume Two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code, by amending the zoning of property located on the northwest corner of Woolworth Road and Tanner Road in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District to RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That item is in District 12. And those are all of your items.
So both of these items are now open for public hearing. If you have anything to say for or against, please come forward. Public hearing is open. No one appears to speak. Public hearing is closed. All right, now we have public hearing on ordinances.
On standard ordinances, and the first item you have is a public hearing for the 2025 Operating in Capital Improvements Budget. Those are ordinances 6477 to 6504, and those will be not, those will be not considered final adoption until your December third special session. The next item is a public hearing for Ordinance 6508 of 2024. That's an ordinance to accept the streets in Simpson Acres Unit Number Four into the Parish of Caddo Road System and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. That's in District 11, as is the public hearing for Ordinance 6509 of 2024, and ordinance to close an abandoned street dedication in the Happy Trails subdivision in Section Four, Township 14 North Range, 15 West, in the Parish of Caddo, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. That item is also in District 11.
All right, if you have anything to say for or against any of these ordinances, please come forward. Public hearing is open.
While we wait to see if there is anyone, just as a note, the previous attachment for the Operating in Capital Improvement Budget ordinances was a little bit difficult to read because of the formatting, so it has been reformatted, in case you have any constituents that want to take another look. It's just an easier scan of it.
All right. No one appears to speak. Public hearing is closed. That brings us to zoning ordinances, their final passage.
The first item for consideration today is Ordinance 6505 of 2024. That's an ordinance to amend Volume Two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gage Watts, second from Commissioner Efferson. Commissioner Gage Watts?
Mr. President, I would like to move to englobo and adopt Ordinance 6508 and Ordinance 6509.
All right. Are we on the right section?
I'm, I think you may have skipped over the zoning ordinances.
Yes, 6505. We're on 6505 right now.
6505, 6506, and 6507.
All right. Terrific.
Thank you.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Gage Watts to englobo and adopt 6505, 6506, and 6507 of 2024. Would you like to speak on your motion?
No.
Did you also want to include 6508 and 6509? Was that your intention?
Are those on here?
Those are the ordinances, not zoning.
Yes.
So yes, so the motion, I'll state it again, is to englobo and adopt 6505, 6, 7, 8, and 9 of 2024.
And the public hearing for the 2025 Operating in Capital Improvement. Did you do that one? Did he read them?
We don't need that one, since it's already been advanced to a public hearing.
Okay.
I mean, advanced to a special session.
Got it.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Efferson, you're on the board.
I'd just like to say, Ordinance 6507, there was not any opposition. It was inadvertently changed to industrial because of the original owners were out of town and missed it. However, there was no opposition to changing it back to R1. And also, Commissioner Lazarus isn't here, but I'm familiar with that area, and I'm pretty sure staff that those roads in that new development are to parish standards. That's the only reason that we would take them in. Am I correct? Okay.
See, no. Thank you, Commissioner Efferson, good points. All right, we can vote on the englobo and adoption. All right, we can vote on the englobo and adoption.
Commissioner Burrell. Thank you. And that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. Bringing us now to ordinances for introduction by title, which you have a few today. The first is ordinance 6477 of 2024. That's an ordinance to adopt Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 4 of the Parish Code of Ordinances relative to parish contracts, to provide for the payment of a living wage by contractors with the parish and otherwise provide with respect thereto. This item has been discussed on previous agendas. If you want to update the text, the full text of the item is now available. So please do take note of that. The next item is the introduction of ordinance 6510 of 2024. That's an ordinance to close and abandon an 80-foot-wide street dedication in Section 20 Township 21 North, Range 14 West in the Parish of Caddo and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. That item is in District 1. And the introduction of ordinance 6511 of 2024 is an ordinance to increase the Caddo Parish portion of the salaries of constables and justices of the peace and otherwise providing with respect thereto. And that brings us now to the consideration of adopting your work session minutes from November 18.
Motion by Commissioner Gage Watts, second by Commissioner Epperson, to adopt the work session minutes of November 18. We can vote. Do you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Gage Watts?
I would. I would like to move to englobo and adopt the work session minutes, Resolution 77, 78, 79.
All right. I believe there may be some dissent about one of these. Commissioner Atkins, do you wish to speak?
Commissioner Gage Watts, would you be willing to alter your englobo to not include 78 and 79, please?
Sure.
Just two items. All right. Okay, so the adjusted motion is englobo and adopt work session minutes and Resolution 77 of 2024. Is there any discussion? We can vote.
Okay, and that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. And brings us now to consideration of Resolution 78 of 2024, which is a resolution in support of Louisiana's Motion Picture Production Program, which is statutorily known as the Motion Picture Production Tax Credit and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gage Watts, second from Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Gage Watts?
I would like to move to englobo and adopt Resolution 77 and 78.
78 and 79, I think you mean.
It says 77 and 78. 78 and 79.
Perfect. All right.
Yes, I can't see today. Okay.
It must be your mustache.
Maybe. I can't see over that.
Okay, so a motion to englobo and adopt 78 and 79 of 2024. Would you like to speak on your question?
I reserve comments. I'll allow. I'm sure that Commissioner Atkins, he hasn't...
I will.
Okay.
Commissioner Burrell.
Since I didn't get a chance to last time.
Very well.
I was going to say, on the motion picture tax credit, I was there when we passed the motion picture tax credit. I was actually on Ways and Mean and voted for it. True enough, the tax credit did get a little out of hand. It got a little high for me, and I was reconsidering it. But given the number of jobs that it created for people who did not go to college, that was a big impact on the state. It also shifted the focus of the movie industry from California. We became Hollywood South. And you would be surprised at the number of investors that came to Louisiana from California when we did this. Since then, Georgia, Mississippi, not Mississippi, Missouri, and several other states hopped on board and started giving tax credits for films. And the film industry is very nomadic. Whoever agrees to will the best, that's where many times they move. That is one of the reasons why in Georgia, you have people like Tyler Prairie, who has a large investment there. He actually bought an old army depot and created a movie industry. I mean, this one, this guy who used to live under the freeway in New Orleans because he was homeless, has something to that magnitude. And, you know, my verdict on 50 Cent is still out. I'm a little shaky there. But I can see his vision of doing it here in Shreveport. And it couldn't, you know, this tax reform deal at this time couldn't have been done at the worst time for Shreveport because we need this type of injection of... We need to fuel Shreveport to create an alternative industry to try to help those who are here that need help, that need jobs. So it couldn't have happened at a worse time. I think, too, that the film tax credits could be handled separate from the other tax credits and abatements in the state and still be able to have a movie industry for Louisiana. So I support this resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Gage Watts, you're on the board.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I spoke briefly about this on Monday, I just wanted to publicly thank Senator Sam Jenkins for his leadership in this bipartisan decision to continue to support film tax credit in the state of Louisiana. In conclusion, in addition to what I almost called him State Representative Burrell just said...
They call me worship.
It's advantageous for us to continue to approve resolutions in this manner because it's vital to prioritize through evaluation bipartisan corporation and the integrity of the legislative process. So for that reason, I am continuing to carry on with this resolution and hope that I have your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gage Watts. That's everyone who's on the board. We can vote. The motion is to englobo and adopt 78 and 79 of 2024.
And that does not advance it. It has six yes votes, three no votes, and three absent. Let's see. Because as a resolution, it's going to need to have a majority of the body to be adopted.
Is it the majority present?
It needs seven. And we've only got six.
That brings us to...
Old business was already adopted.
We've already handled new businesses, empty communiques, and committee reports. Second time, if you have a communique or a report to share, please get on the board. Commissioner Young.
Okay, I don't have a really a communique, but I just think this is an excellent time. You know, maybe this is to educate myself. But the film industry, from all indications, is a very lawful. It's a very lawful activity. Nobody's advocating making films, making pornographic films. That's not in evidence. Nobody's advocating making anti-American films or anti-entertainment films. And I really don't understand, to be quite frank with you. I mean, I do know why, but I just don't understand how it is that we switch up when we talk about economic development. For every other lawful activity in Louisiana, you know, we're willing to offer tax credits. This is a lawful activity. I really, you know, maybe it's just a cultural thing. You know, but I haven't heard anyone explain as to why they wouldn't support tax credit for lawful activity.
We're just two months until President-elect Trump returns to the...
My Lord. My Lord. But anyways, you know, I just really think it's unfortunate because I know there was a time, I mean, I'm not 969 years old like Methuselah was, but I've been around long enough to know that, you know, everybody used to embrace cinematography. But, I mean, it's like our country is so divided now, and it's very sad that we're so divided that it seems to mean that that the people who are typically champion, the champions of cinematography, are not making Western movies. And I think if we were at a period in our history where we're making Western movies, where we're depicting, you know, the earliest settlers as being the heroes, I don't think we would get this type of pushback, to be quite frank with you. And to me, that's just very sad. It's because this country has always been about freedom of expression. And I hope that, you know, when more of us get together, I hope that we can work together to support the things that sometimes we don't agree with. If we only support those things that we totally agree with, we're not going to move forward as a community. I spoke at a community meeting the other night, and I would just like to acknowledge, Mr. Clark, he was there to grace our meeting. I came back to Shreveport when I got off the military in 1978. And one thing I noticed about Louisiana when I moved back as a 20-year-old, and I still feel that way today. I'm part of this body because I'm hoping that things will change. But the people here in Louisiana, and indeed in most of the South, we only have two gears. That's backwards, which is reverse, and park. Reverse and park. And I just wish we would do better. And I hope that in 2025, that we can do better. I'm going to rededicate myself into supporting some ideas, some resolutions, or motions that maybe I don't totally agree with, that really benefit my particular interests. But we got to do better, y'all. And I just can't fathom why we would be opposed to economic development for a lawful activity. I mean, this is our time. We can talk all about what Moses did and what Peter and Paul did, but the good Lord placed us here now to do our part to try to make the world better. And the word civilization derives from the term civility, which means peace. And I pray and hope that we'll start behaving more civilized and start trying to reach accommodations with one another. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner Cothran.
Yes, Mr. President. I just had a question. It's not a communique. Do we ever dedicate streets from the parish? It's, you know...
To people?
Yeah, within the city, they do it quite a bit. And I'm just wondering...
Yes, there's one in Commissioner Atkins' district for Reverend Calvin Austin.
Okay.
I know for a fact.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Commissioner Cothran asked if we ever dedicate streets in the parish. And I mentioned the one that's dedicated to Reverend Calvin Austin, especially at Elbe Road.
It's not really. I don't think that the street name actually changed, but there's a sign. Maybe it did change. I'm not sure. But there's a sign acknowledging that portion of the road in his honor.
Yeah, it's still Elbe Road. But there's a brown sign underneath the green sign that says the name of the...
Kind of in honor of, kind of thing.
Yes.
So we have something in place for that, correct? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, cool.
Great. We'll look forward to it.
No, I'm not doing that.
Oh, all right.
I'm asking for another reason.
Okay, sure. Just for a friend. Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to address some of the concerns expressed previously about certain votes on these last motions. You know, I did not speak negatively against any industry. And we all, it is not uncivil to vote the way we want to vote. So there was no ill will or impolite behavior associated in my vote. However, I did vote no because, one, I think that the Louisiana Legislature is currently in the process of working through the tax codes. And I wanted to give them the space to do that without imposing my view on top of them, without that work being fully done at this point. I don't have a problem with someone wanting to impose their view, but I didn't want to impose my view upon them. And you all, I think those of you that I've worked with in the past will often recognize I'm less prone to want to express my view on the legislature until their, at least until their view has been fully vetted and expressed. So that's one reason I voted no. And secondly, as some of my colleagues know, I've been concerned about the movie industries, the mobility, and I'm drawing a blank on the word, the...
Transients?
Transient nature of the movie industry. And they will come, as Commissioner Burrell said. I think movies will come as long as you're paying them. But the minute someone else pays more, or you can't pay them as much, then they tend to move on. So that, and I think I've spoken to my colleagues about that. So that's one reason why I'm just reticent to put too much money into the movie industry. If you back a large manufacturing facility, for example, it's much harder to pick it up and move it. So if I'm going to use incentive money, I'd rather place that money in something that is less mobile than the movie industry. So again, I don't have any problem with the industry. I would love to see it come here and invest. But for those two reasons, I chose to vote no on that issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to share pretty much the same sentiment as Commissioner Atkins and wanted to share with Commissioner Young that this is not a divide of belief. We engloboed two resolutions, one that I am very much not in support of, one that I believe is right now in the workings. I also, with the resolution with the movie tax credits, those tax credits have been in place and people left here. And I would love to see people back in Caddo Parish making movies and investing in our community. From what I understand about this tax credit, for them to restructure it, they needed to take it away to reconstruct it. And so I believe they're in the workings of it right now and are trying to come up with a resolution. And so I'm waiting to see what they are bringing forth to help move us in Louisiana forward in better light with taxes so we can compete nationally. So that is why I voted no. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, again, to this group, the motion picture industry is part of our economy. And it helped diversify our economy. In Louisiana, we're still trying to embrace oil and gas as our major industry. A recent report came out from some major economists that says that Louisiana oil and gas is only accounting for 14% of Louisiana's GDP. In other words, it is a dying industry. This drill, baby drill, is more of a slogan than a reality. And we must find other ways to diversify our economy if we're going to sustain some sort of decent living here in Louisiana. So if we wind up killing industries that could possibly be used to help support the citizens of this state, especially when Louisiana is almost last in education. So this business about sending everybody to college, that's a farce. So we do need to find every way possible to try to diversify our industry, and we shouldn't be trying to kill it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Gage Watts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to speak about both of these resolutions. First of all, the one with the film tax credit, I didn't speak a lot about it today because on Monday, some of my very same colleagues who did not support it was not in support because of where it was in the legislature. I started out by saying that State Senator Sam Jenkins had already led a bipartisan effort to get this passed out of Senate. So I thought that that part of it was cleared. But when we're saying economic development and what we need in Caddo Parish in the state of Louisiana is jobs. When we're saying no to a resolution like this, you're saying, no, I do not support 10,000 jobs in Louisiana. You're saying, no, I do not support $1 billion in sales in Louisiana. You're saying no to attracting major productions benefiting hospitality and local sectors. You're saying that I would rather see this tax eliminated and people to move away than to move to this area. You cannot have it both ways. That is just... to move to this area. You cannot have it both ways. Just, that is just like a person who's saying that they want safety, yet they promote crime. So what are we saying when we don't agree here locally around this horseshoe as Caddo Parish representatives? We all stood on the steps with fifty cent, congratulating him, welcoming him here to this community, standing up saying that we would support this type of initiative. Was it for picture purposes? Or was it for the purpose of saving jobs and our local economy? This is a direct impact on us. This is critical for our economic growth in this state. So what are we saying? Are we saying that we're going to continue to argue about who this benefits? Or are we saying that we're going to stand together? That remains a question. I came together, I, personally, we all have our own individual letterhead, and I will still request a letter to be sent in support of this. But if I'm going to say that I want to work with my city representatives, then this is our way of saying this is what we do collectively. But we're not, we're not standing together for whatever reason there may be. But there is a huge, and this is just the beginning of it, because this was introduced in this tax session, or so-called it to be, that this will make Louisiana and Caddo Parish suffer vastly if this tax is eliminated. So I ask for your support in that increment so that we could speak together collectively. Now, on the, the second part of this is, we all received memos from our, our attorney talking about Senate Bill Two. I talked about it on Monday and letting everyone knows exactly what it says in there, to be able to clearly define the difference between what juveniles are already being tried as and what type of crimes that fit this Constitution amendment. This one that we're facing right now has got national, national coverage. It's being talked about everywhere. There are people who are forming coalitions to come against this bill that's going to affect us. The, the juvenile system that is in our purview, and we're saying to us, especially those of us who sit around this horseshoe who has children, you're not even considering them to be able to not make any mistake because the word any includes everything. So if they go in the store and steal a dollar soda, they're going to CCCC or wherever they be in the state of Louisiana. Is that fair to them? To introduce them to even more criminals or to put more bearings on our law enforcement, on our sheriffs? Because we can't come together and say that we are not in support of putting a child who has done any crime, made a mistake. There is no one here who has never made a mistake. Regardless to your beliefs about whomever and whatever happened to a person, it is wrong for you to isolate your beliefs on one isolated event, to say that I would not support that. I think that we should really reconsider some of the things that we say and some of the things that seems hypocritical. Because either we're going to support the kids or we're going to throw them away. It's just that simple. Our children deserve better, and I will bring it back. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Gage Watts. Commissioner Atkins, this will be your second time, so I'm going to skip over you for now. Commissioner Crackman, you're next.
Yeah, when we talk about giving tax breaks to certain industries, we talk about giving tax breaks to industries that are very self-sustaining. Look at what we give the, the Caddo Bozier Port, look what we give some of these solar farms in my district, Amazon. A lot of these folks don't really need the incentive. Curtis Jackson didn't need the incentive to come here. The rent was cheap enough for him to come here. And I did stand on those steps with him and take the pictures. I appreciate what he's aiming to do. And if he can find the rent cheaper somewhere else, I'd, I'd be really surprised. But what I see in my district is people in the grocery line putting items back that they can't afford. People are hurting. And if the film industry is hurting, it's not as important to me, and I apologize for that. It's not that I don't want to see the creation of jobs. Mind you, these were jobs that were here years ago. But when I see people that have jobs hurting, that's what I'm focused on. And I can't speak for everybody, but my district is full of a lot of calloused hands, a lot of those flatbed trucks, white trucks that you see at four and five o'clock in the morning at the gas station filling up their coffee. Those are the folks I'm concerned about. And we have some of the highest sales tax rates in the nation. We have some of the highest property tax rates in the state. People are hurting. And I don't want to give a tax break to any big boxes, to any Hollywood celebrities. In case nobody knew, movie industry makes a lot of money. Amazon makes a lot of money. Caddo Bozier Port makes a lot of money. They don't need the incentive, but we have spoiled them to have such. Now, this commission is now opting not, not to say that we give it our blessing. And I think that that's a memorandum on how much we care for our working people, not the lack of jobs, but for the working people. So, I mean, we'll see, time will tell if Millennium or whatever, whatever Curtis Jackson's deal is.
G-unit.
Well, G-unit. We'll see how long it, it stays or lasts or whatever, and, you know, prayerfully, he'll stick around and create those jobs. But if not, then we know that we can stand beside our blue collar workers. And then that's where I stand on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Crackman. Commissioner Epperson.
I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration of Resolution Seventy-eight and Seventy-nine, if I can get a second.
Yes.
Okay, my reason being, I don't, you know, we, we, we engloboed, so I would like to see a vote on each one of them individually. And a motion to reconsider, I think, is applicable and can be voted on by the ones that are in the majority of the vote.
Was it in the majority or the prevailing side?
By the majority of those present.
Is it, Attorney Frazier, would you?
It would be the prevailing side, whichever side lost the vote, someone from the one vote, someone from their side to make the motion.
So would that be the three no votes in this case?
It would, it would be...
Or the six, or among the six yes votes?
Oh, that's right, it'd be yes. It would be actually among the...
Yes vote.
It, it would be the, among the majority.
Majority.
Okay, among the greater number of votes, among the six.
Yes.
Okay, among the six yes votes. Okay, well, there is now a motion on the table to, is there a second for the motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Okay, okay, sorry, I didn't hear you, Commissioner Gage Watts. So there's a motion to reconsider by Commissioner Epperson, second by Commissioner Gage Watts. Are we reconsidering both, or are we reconsidering them one at a time? What's your motion?
One at a time. That way we want to get the true picture of how everyone felt.
Okay, Commissioner Epperson moves to reconsider Resolution Seventy-eight and then separately Resolution Seventy-nine. We can vote on the motion to reconsider. How many votes are required for passage, Attorney Frazier?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, correct.
Is it usually two-thirds?
Yeah, I thought it was.
Isn't it usually eight votes?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you asked me how, how many votes were necessary for the, for the resolution.
For the resolution, it takes seven votes, but to reconsider takes eight votes. Is that correct?
It would take two-thirds of the members present.
Two-thirds of the members present. Okay, so, okay, so we can now reconsider, vote whether or not to reconsider. Is that right? Okay.
This is a motion to reconsider, and I believe we have, let's see, if I count correctly, we have nine members present, so this would take six in order to...
To reconsider.
Yes. Commissioners Atkins and Burrell.
We're voting to re, to reconsider, but we're not voting on the resolution yet.
No.
All right.
Okay, and that, that advances, so we will take up at this point the consideration of Resolution Seventy-eight?
All right, so now we have another vote on Resolution Seventy-eight of twenty twenty-four. Is there, is there discussion on this? We've already been discussing it.
On Seventy-eight?
Seventy-eight is the film one.
Yeah, I would like to make an amendment to that.
Okay.
To, um, ask for a...
I would like to make the amendment to ask for the letter of support.
Is that a question?
Yes.
Okay. So is there, is there a second for the amendment? Okay. Commissioner Gage Watts, please speak about your motion so that we all understand.
So this letter of support would be for, in support of the film tax credit instead of the resolution, since there were some of my colleagues, colleagues who may not be comfortable with the resolution, maybe the letter of support will suffice.
So a letter of support, would that be an action item that takes fewer votes to pass?
Correct.
It would take a majority of the present members to pass?
Correct.
All right.
Point of, point of order, or point of information, please?
Commissioner Atkins.
Does a, does a letter of support, does it come with all the commissioner's signature on it, or is it just from the...
It will be on our letterhead, correct.
How would it, could you tell us what the letter will look like, please?
Um, I believe the clerk has some information.
Mr. Clark?
Well, we're, we're just trying to clarify on the, so there was a motion to reconsider, and then now it sounds like this motion is kind of a, kind of in, in lieu of like a substitute motion rather than Resolution Seventy-eight.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure we're following that correctly.
Yes.
Okay.
And the letter of support will have the yeas, the nays, the absents.
Included within the letter.
And the motion to second.
Does that, would the resolutions have those as well?
Uh, resolutions that are sent, sent to the legislature, yes, it is.
Okay, does that, oh.
Then, sir, what's the difference?
The difference being that one is an action item and requires the majority of those present, so that would be just five votes. The other is a resolution which requires a majority of the full body, regardless of how many of you are present today.
Just a parliament.
So that's seven. So a resolution needs seven votes to pass, an action item only five.
I applaud the parliamentarian queen on her, her creativity.
Yeah, she's like that.
All right. Okay, so we have a, so we have an amended motion on the table. Shall we vote on the amendment first?
Yes.
And then, okay. All right, let's vote.
This is on the amended?
This is on the amendment, and then we're going to vote on...
Adopting it.
Adopting it.
Wait, I thought this was actually a substitute motion.
It does seem more like a substitute motion to me.
Directing a, a letter of support to be written on behalf of the commission.
Okay, so just one vote.
Move and adopt. Thank you.
We'll adopt for a letter of support instead of a resolution of support. So this is just one vote, requiring five votes to pass.
And that motion does pass. It says, failed on the screen only because that was started under the premise that it would be a resolution, but it does pass with six votes in favor, three in opposition, and three absent. So that action item directing a letter of support to be sent on behalf of the commission will be sent, and there's, that final vote tally will be included within that letter as well.
Of course, any commissioners who wish to express a different opinion can do so on their commissioner letterhead, writing as individuals or as a group anytime they want. We have free speech in our land. Okay, that brings us to Resolution Seventy-nine for reconsideration. Is there any motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make the same motion.
Okay, Commissioner Gage Watts moves to make a letter of support for Resolution Seventy-nine instead of a resolution.
Yes.
And so this only requires one vote. We can vote.
Okay, and that motion carries with, that's going to be six in support, three in opposition, and three absent for a letter of support regarding opposition to Senate Bill Two.
All right, that, so now we're back in communiques and reports. Does anyone else have anything to say? I hope not.
I have a lot to say.
All right.
I will, but it's...
All right. Okay, so we have citizen comments, later arrivals. Are there any, Mr. Clark?
We've not received...